Okay, let's go ahead and call a meeting to order. It's Tuesday, May 15th, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed?
We have April 2018 collective desig.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Yes, we've got the National Employee Health and Fitness Day tomorrow. MAC Board of Directors tomorrow. Campo Board of Directors tomorrow. Chamber Connections Thursday. Today is the Peace Officers Memorial Day, so the flag is at half staff in accordance with county ordinance. That's all I got.
Did you radio last night?
No. Jeff couldn't do it. Larry Benz did it. Did a great job. And I asked John if he still wanted us to come on this month, and he was gonna get back to me. He hasn't, so we might... I don't know. We might skip this month. But yeah, it wouldn't work in any of our schedules.
Yeah, we've got baseball, 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 baseball. Pre-trial release meeting on Monday.
We're gonna get rained out. I got Cap Agent Board meeting tonight. Thursday is the Coke County Republican Club Hot Dogs in the Park, which I have tickets for. Friday, everybody needs to buy Lions Club peanuts. John, myself, I think Chief Schofield, and we're gonna be out there seven in the morning.
Oh. No, I'm just kidding.
So, you know, everybody stop and buy peanuts.
From us?
From us, yeah. Dollar a bag, or six bags for $5, unless you're Larry Vincent, and then you get five bags for $6. So, but it goes to good cause.
Where you selling that?
Right here on our... We got this... We put in a new intersection just so it was pretty, and we're right there.
The city did.
Yeah, the city did. That was... They did it for the Lions Club, I think.
With speed bumps and everything in it.
Yeah.
When they gonna fix that?
Whenever they do the overlay. They're gonna tear up our block, the 100 block, Madison.
So, they're gonna get to that when they do all of that, don't they?
After July 4th.
They're gonna do the asphalt in August, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So, but it's really pretty, so...
Marriage is less rough than that.
Okay.
At least Friday morning.
Commission comments. Bids and contracts. Bid award 2018-28. Signage for the Health Department.
I drove by there the other day. I don't know if I got to sign bids or not. There's a thousand different ways to do it. I don't know. Yeah. I don't know. I still say just putting one there... What is that, Constitution? One great big sign there, but those other ones already have spots for them. I don't know. Still don't know.
It's a lot of signs. I drove by it too, probably three times. And it's such a big... Yeah, you've got the one from the west, and you've got the middle one, and you've got the one on the east side, and...
We could always do a couple of them and then see if we need to add more.
Which ones do you... I mean, you think you need them all, Kristy? Which ones do you wanna just go with to start with?
Put the two... The one that's facing each other, those two crack, and then put that on the right. And then the one that's like on the driveway.
You think in taking out the whole concrete pedestal there, or...
I don't believe the two pedestals with your concrete, so the one on the little side that goes up there, pull the marquee.
Yeah, but isn't it set on a pedestal? Like, set up on it?
It should be able to hold that one.
But you're just gonna leave it there? A big concrete pad?
Sleep pad there, and if you ever want for the future, add a bigger sign, maybe with a spotlight or something on it, you can do that there.
That work?
Yeah. I mean, we didn't make a decision on it.
So, we're gonna do east-west and then a one-on-Constitution?
Yeah. And then later on, we're all...
So, we won't do the lit one basically?
Yeah.
And we will have signage on the building, so if we thin out...
Yeah. We have signs. I assume that we can take the signs off the building and...
So, Greg, what is the... Do we need power out there then?
To the signs?
Well, 'cause we were talking about having to re-bore underneath that driveway to get electric out there.
There's no power out there now.
Right. I mean, it's eight to five, so why do you need lights out there?
They won't need it then.
So, I mean, if there's somebody coming at eight o'clock...
There's irrigation out there.
Irrigation?
There's an irrigation timer out there.
Oh, we might save it for then.
We'll see. I mean, I'll see where we get one.
Well, there's no power out there right now.
It's shut off.
Okay.
Breaker.
Maybe we'll just get an irrigation wire or something, put the control of the building or something, that'll hold longer. But we'll still have to get an irrigation wire out there.
Y'all don't really have any after-hours hours, right, to where they need a lit sign?
No. Some guys do have meetings or classes, but it's probably not necessary. I think that there's a straight line.
Okay.
I know there's one across the street.
There's one across, but I don't think there's one that...
Well, let's just go with that then.
Can you tell me which ones that is? 'Cause we had Monument A, B, C.
A, B, C.
Do you have the pictures?
It's A, B, C.
I gave it to one of them last time. Sorry, I gave it to you.
I think it's this one that we're doing. Just the light one?
A, B, C.
And then the lit... It says A, B, C. Monument A, B, C, and then it says Lit Signs.
But you said not to worry about the lit sign.
Right. That's the one.
So, the A, B, C? Yes.
Yeah, Monument Sign A, B, and C, and we'll hold off on the lit sign.
Yes. So, can you make a... To B, C signs, awards?
So, I move that we award the sign... signage at the New Health Department Building to be seen signs for Sign A, B, and C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll bring you a contract next week.
Good.
Signing of agreement for 2018-27 interior painting.
You guys did award this to Extreme, and here's the contract. And they've already signed the contract, so...
Questions?
Nope. We gotta go.
I move that we sign the contract with Extreme Painting for the painting at the New Health Department Building.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go on to new business accounts payable review.
Do we have any... Pay cards for the share?
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of supplemental agreement number one, South Liberty Road Low Water Crossing replacement.
Precinct report?
Yep. Inspection of precinct report.
Oh, where did I see? Oh, there, yeah. County Clerk to present annual precinct report.
Did you talk to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could've gone out here early.
You all get a copy or...
Yeah, electronically we did. This'll work.
I have it.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know. It's... I have to do this every year by statute, and we, you know, check the... All our locations and make sure we have a sufficient number of owners going in there and everything. These changes actually were implemented the first of the year, where we moved from St. Martin's Catholic School to the VFW, and then we moved from McClung Park into the Link. And so, we've already had successful election in April, so I think everything's good. So, that's all I got. Any questions?
No.
No, thanks.
Great.
I think the Link is a lot easier to get in and out of. Okay. Now, we'll go to approval and signing of supplemental agreement number one, South Liberty Road Low Water Crossing Replacement.
Okay, this project is under construction now, and a few things we wanted to do at construction phase services, agreements with them, with Cook, Flat, and Strobel Engineers to review some shop drawings, make periodic site visits, and meetings with us and the contractor as needed. It's a very small amount, just to kinda cover us in case we do get in a situation where we need to bring them back in for a little extra help. So, the amount's $1,952, and it'd be a supplemental to the original agreement for design, and I'd recommend approval.
You got some hourly rates for additional stuff if need be?
Yeah. It's attached to the back of the agreement.
Yeah, well, that didn't get attached to ours, so anyway.
Okay.
It's all right.
Yeah, it's right here.
It's just standard with hourly rates for different people.
Yeah.
You guys wanna see that?
That's how much you emailed us?
Yeah, I thought I attached that part too, but I guess I did. I probably just did.
Well, I was just looking at the agenda. Maybe I wasn't looking at the email.
I may have missed giving you the attachment. Attachment for the hourly rates and everything is part of the agreement.
Okay.
That's good.
Yep.
I move that we approve and sign supplemental agreement number one for South Liberty Road Low Water Crossing Replacement with Cook... Is it Cook, Strobel? Flat, Cook, Flat, and Strobel Engineers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Signing of surplus title.
For the 2003 International...
Brink's Truck?
Yes.
I move that we sign the surplus title.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't get our... We lost $15.
$15, hundred and grand.
What else we got to come before us? Because Randy had said they'd be here probably about 10 o'clock, so we got 45 minutes we can...
What you got, Debbie?
I do have one thing. Mr. Hillkey came yesterday, and the X-ray machine at the courthouse went. It's gone. So, we've had that machine for 10 years. We bought it in 2008. And the company that we bought it from, we never received any maintenance. We just didn't take the maintenance for all that time. But for them to come and fix it, it's going to maybe, if they can fix it for what they think is wrong, $8,604. And here's their estimate of service on it. When we purchased the X-ray machine, it was about $23,000. Hillkey said that they're probably about $25,000, that we may even get a trade-in on this one if we bought it, so... But it is not working. They had to do their best yesterday and...
Use their wand.
Yeah. So, it's kind of... I'm not sure either if this was purchased state contract at the time, or if these people have, so I'll have to check into it, even if he does bring me a quote of what it would cost for a new one. Is it an emergency? I don't know. I just wanted to come over and talk to you about it, but this I just got in my hands just a minute ago.
It seems like that'd be something that's pretty important.
So, how old is the one we've got now?
We bought it in 2008.
Okay, so it's 10 years old.
It's just the X-ray part of it. It's not the other part of it.
So, they're gonna come and try to fix it, and then we're gonna get a bill for them coming.
Yes. The bill for them to come is $3,000, but $8,000.
Okay. And then if they can't fix it, then we're gonna have to buy a new one that's gonna be $25,000 or somewhere in that range.
I can't win.
State gonna help?
Didn't ask that. I know when we started the security, that's been there since we started security, I think. We purchased the stuff when we started the security. And we even pay for the manpower, you know, the contract services, so... I could talk to the judge about it, but...
Yeah, I probably ought to, just because, I mean, it's...
So, just wanted to give you that since I got it yesterday, and I got the quote today. So, just to make you aware of it, 'cause I'm gonna look to you guys to let me know what you wanna do, if you wanna purchase or if you wanna...
So, is the $8,000 like a worst-case scenario, or is that a... It could be the $8,000 X-ray, and it could be $10,000 more worth of stuff? Because if you change your transmission, and then you find out, "Well, I've got my three grand wrapped up there," and then all of a sudden you find out you gotta change your clutch too, then it's $1,000 more. It's easier to be ready for the $4,000 bike than a $3,000 bike. So, the $8,000 or $12,000, is that $20,000, or... I'd rather try to fix it.
They did the quote over the phone, so I...
So, where do they come from?
Well, they're coming from Chicago, and so they've got mileage, hotel, meals. So, don't they have to come see it in order to know what parts they need?
They were troubleshooting it over the phone.
So, they're gonna order all these parts, and it may not be all the parts that they need. And then what if the parts... What if it's just totally shot, and the parts don't work? Do they take them back?
I told Jeff to come over now. I just texted Jeff.
Yeah.
All right, now, get over here.
I mean, 'cause, yeah, I think $8,000 is a minimum. I think it's gonna be at least that much.
Maybe. I mean, they could be sitting there going, "Oh, you could've just had a wire break, but we're gonna prepare you for the worst."
Well, that's true, too.
So, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Did they give you... Give us a worst-case scenario?
But obviously, if they're troubleshooting it over the phone, it's probably more than a wire.
Have you ever had something taken in, and when you go to pick it up, they say, "It wasn't as bad as what we thought," and it's gonna be...
Absolutely. But I'm not dealing with people from Chicago. I'm dealing with people that I deal with all the time, and I don't try to shop them around, and they don't dick with me. They're straight shooters, so...
Doesn't happen very often.
I'm just... I'm trying to think of when that happened to me, and I really can't recall.
He's on his way.
Okay.
I mean, that's why you do business with certain people, 'cause you know they're gonna tell you what's going on. They're not gonna sit here and gig you. If we're gonna make a trip down there, it's gonna cost us $3,000 to drive down there and stay for a couple nights, and $20 for a park, 'cause somebody tripped over the board and broke it, and we just gotta replug it in.
Well, they got... They just got one hotel night. I mean, it looks pretty minimal. I mean, um...
I'd say mostly it's gonna be the...
I'm not sure what the...
Day worth of travel and labor, but...
They got travel from Chicago office. They got 12 at $165. I don't know what that is, but... And they got 760 miles at 54 cents.
Probably 12 hours.
That could be.
And then the mileage, and which, I mean, that's understandable, I guess. Are they the only ones that can work on it?
Don't know.
Now, everybody's gonna know it's not working, and they're gonna be trying to get in with their pocket knives.
Well, they got the wand over there that they can wand everybody with. Body search.
That's me, me, Larry.
They're gonna get their money's worth now.
So, we gotta buy a bunch of gloves, plastic...
Most likely needs a PC.
Nobody's watching us.
We should not have downtime ever, 'cause this is just getting worse. What else you got, Debbie? Tell Jeff it's up there. Krista? Lynn?
No.
Nothing? No good jokes or anything?
Uh-huh.
Jill?
Closing on the Health Department building on the first...
Yes.
It's scheduled.
June 1st?
Yes.
Oh, that's coming up soon.
Can everyone wear tennis shoes tomorrow for Fitness, Health?
No.
For a $25 donation to...
Well, not you all. You don't count.
$25 donation to United Way.
How about $5 donation?
Okay. I knew you tried to talk me down, so I started 25.
I wear my rubber sole wingtips. Does that count?
I don't even know what the hell that is. Sounds kinda kinky, Sam. I don't know if you wanna bring that up or...
Your rubber sole...
Those have rollers on the bottom and jets, or...
I don't know. How about if I just don't wear a tie tomorrow?
What if you don't wear a suit? Do you ever not wear a suit?
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a sport.
Yeah, sweater, sport.
So, how much money do me and Wheeler have to raise to get you to either shave the mustache or paint it purple? For our cancer team.
I paint it purple.
Our relay team. Won't shave it, though?
No, Linda won't. I asked her. I said, "Won't let me shave it?" She's like... No. So, yeah.
See, wants it covering up part of your face? Sorry, guys.
I know.
You know Linda would agree with me, though, if she was in there. She'd be jumping in on the jokes, too. She likes to pick on you.
No, Maria over there is wanting to pick on me more. That's my daytime wife. She's so... With our respect.
You got a daytime wife? You got a daytime mother-in-law?
No.
Oh, well, that's all right.
She's a PO, and they're already...
I didn't sign that one, Debbie. I don't know if it...
Transfer.
I sent it the same. I didn't... I still don't know about that.
Yeah, I'll have to go.
Not with chili to eat.
They are... Got that corner, then I'll text y'all a picture. That corner has been fixed and repaired. The jail is about 75% done, with all the pressure washing ceiling and joint repairs. I'm moving around along with your building. It looks good, but my building isn't good.
There's one of these in there already.
Slaying for the roof, supposed to be this week.
It's all for the travel.
They get all that water table fixed on Carnegie?
They fixed that corner, and they're having that worked on it this week.
Is this the same?
They got that corner fixed.
All the way around.
All the way around.
Debbie, we got two of these. I already signed one of them.
Oh, you did?
No.
Did I just not get the original?
You didn't think I read them, did you?
We all voted.
Okay, good. Good job.
You said that you were paid.
When you're gonna get counted, this is...
And those two boards in my office, Craig, are actually from the Carnegie building. Plus, I have some old knob and two wiring there. I'm becoming a procure of everything old.
You're a hoarder. Throw it away.
Let it go, Sam.
It's going downhill fast, quick.
Come on, Jeff. Jeff, I did my best to explain the quote, and then we had a couple more questions about the machine itself.
Okay.
The diagnosis of...
How sure are they that that's what is wrong with it? Is that like a worst-case scenario, or is this gonna...
All I can tell you is that we did some troubleshooting. I was on the phone with him yesterday. Actually, I had Bob Tweighhouse on the phone with him yesterday, 'cause he knows a lot more about the machines, 'cause he's only uses it every day. When they got to the point where they figured it was the computer, he put me back on the phone, 'cause then they got to talking about McDoers. He explained to me that he needed us to get into the machine to figure out if it was really the computer or not, which he suspected it was. There's a fan in there, and he said that fan's not blowing. He thinks it's the computer. I don't think the fan was blowing. So, he wanted me to take a picture. There's two different types of plugs, so he needed to know what kind of plugs it had to figure out what kind of computer it was. I took that picture, sent it to him, so he could figure out the quote, if I was certain it's the computer. This thing hasn't been serviced, apparently, in nine years. They seem shocked by that. I don't know if they're supposed to come service it, or if we're supposed to call them to service it. I don't know how that works. I talked to the guy a few minutes ago, right before your meeting started. I had a card about new machines, prices. Basically, said new machines are about the same as prices what this one was. Apparently, they haven't gone up or down in price. He's supposed to have a guy, the salesperson, call me some time this morning. He indicated that we may be able to get a pretty decent trade-in value for the machine that we have towards the purchase price of a new one, because our machine has been pretty reliable, not had any problems. But again, until I talk to somebody, I don't know what we're looking at, so...
Jeff, what was the name of that vendor before? It's not the same.
All I know is what... The only name I've seen is this.
All over there.
Okay.
That's the only name I saw.
Okay.
So, what's a pretty good price on trade-in?
I don't know. That's... I'm just telling you exactly, word for word, what the guy's told me so far. So, I don't know what kinda... I mean, I guess getting anything, trade-in's better than nothing. I mean, I would say not having to do, stick the diamond to it in nine years is not bad, especially seeing what it's gonna cost to fix it now.
So, once they order the parts and they come, we're getting stuck with that $8,000 bill, right? Probably?
Well, that letter says that is just...
Parts not charged if not needed.
Based... Yeah, that... Assuming that's what's wrong with it, that's what it's gonna cost. Now, when they get down here, and if it's not that, they'll fix whatever's wrong. So, but, I mean, we're all pretty sure it's the computer, so we're gonna pay that computer. But now, there's other things wrong with it. They'll fix the other things that are wrong with it. Those would be in addition to... That's why I wanna make sure that y'all understand. That is just for those parts. That's why I wanna make sure that y'all understand. That is just for those parts. I mean, the travel is only gonna be the travel.
Right.
Shouldn't have to make two trips, I wouldn't think, unless he has to get more parts, but I would think he would come with, I mean, since he's driving down, I would think he'd be bringing a truck with all kinds of stuff on it, but.
So if they fix, if they fix.
I think he's gonna service it and do whatever to it while he's here.
If they fix it, if they can fix it, and they fix it, are we gonna get another ten years out of it, or, I mean, that's, that's the hundred thousand dollar question is, you know? Fix one thing and then other stuff shoots scraps and then where you at?
Just like your truck, you fix one thing on it.
Well, I realize that.
The next thing falls off, so, I mean, I can't promise you anything with it. And I'm not about to, so I don't know.
Spend it like it's your money.
And without knowing what they're gonna give us, I mean, they would give us, if I, as soon as I find out what a trade-in would be, if we're gonna get a great trade-in to where, you know, a purchase price would be not much more than this, I'd say absolutely buy a new one. But I don't know what kind of trade-in they're gonna give us, till I get a phone call from this guy. I mean, this has all been real quick, so.
Yeah.
I literally just got the email with the quote at like eight forty-eight this morning. So, and I didn't want them to, I didn't wanna tell them, "Oh, by the way, give me a price on new ones before I got this," 'cause then I was afraid they wouldn't give me this, until they started trying to sell me a new one.
It was just informational for them to say that this is coming, so.
Yeah.
They're not expecting to make a decision.
But I didn't wanna, like I said, I didn't wanna start trying to get sales calls before I got a price on what it was gonna cost to fix it, in case it wasn't, you know, if it was half that to fix it, I wanted to know what it was gonna cost to fix it.
Is it critical, obviously, that you put a lot of stuff through that belt in a day's time, right?
Well, if we have a hundred thousand people coming through a year, the vast majority of them come through with something, so. You know, we were scheduled to have a murder trial this week. It did not happen for various reasons, but had it happened, we would've had a lot of people coming through. That, that machine would've been very important to us, because we would've had a lot of useful coming through.
Questionable.
Questionable folks, questionable folks who did not get along with each other, that there would've been a lot of security risk here, that we, we would've had a lot of concerns about people not getting along with each other, and it would've been something very important to have.
Okay, so if we say, "Come, come fix it," how quickly will they come? Will they be here tomorrow?
I haven't gotten that, I haven't asked that question. I would assume they'll get somebody quickly, but I don't know. They'll jump in the truck and head this way. I don't know how, if they have to order this computer, if they have to build it, if they have one sitting, and the guy's just gonna jump in his truck, I, I don't know. Like I said, this all just happened yesterday morning, and, and I've had three other major issues. I'm dealing with technical problem, technological issues at the courthouse, and yesterday was not a good day for me.
Let's find out what, uh.
You tell me what you want me to find out.
Let's find out what the trade-in would be towards a new one. Let's, let's figure out what that cost is. So that we can decide which route we wanna go.
He told me low twenties, which is about, we paid twenty-three-five for this one, so apparently they haven't changed the price much.
I'd be questioning how soon to.
Yeah, we need time, yeah, 'cause, you know, as you said, it's.
We need it, so.
I mean, right now, we're, we're doing a physical inspection of every bag that comes through.
So you say if we order a new one, how quickly will we get a new one? If we have you come repair it, how quickly will you, I mean, will, will you be here tomorrow or Thursday or?
Month from now.
And, you know, if they give us ten thousand for the old one, which I don't think it'd be that.
Two thousand bucks, we can have you drive up there and get it. Twenty-five percent of the cost on it is the travel, mileage, hotel, meals, and tolls, so, this is the only people that work on them.
I tried Brian, but he said, "I gotta draw the line."
Maybe you do a little research on other vendors for, I mean, if we're gonna buy a new one or something, too, I don't know. Just, just to kinda see, compare. Other courthouses have different types of. They may be higher, I don't know, so. Some kind of comparison.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was on state contract when we bought it, when? Because a full-fledged bid would be out a month or more, and we can't do that.
They're on, they're on state contract. No, the, to get the unit is on state contract. I, I don't know if that company, but I know I've seen them.
I'd be interested in knowing what a new one would cost, and then, like they said, the timeline. I'm okay with putting Band-Aids on it, as long as they use duct tape, but, you know, not, not just regular masking tape, you know?
Gorilla tape.
Gorilla tape, there you go. I mean, if for nine thousand we fix it and it lasts us another ten years, then, hell, it's worth it, but if that's not the problem, then we shoot ourselves in the foot and.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we probably need to have it serviced more than every nine years, because when I opened up the panel to look inside to take that picture, the dust and the filth inside was amazing, and anybody that's ever dealt with computers at all knows that they say dust is the enemy of computers, and so I know that probably didn't help this computer unit inside there.
You shouldn't open it up.
I was following their instructions.
I'm just messing with you, Jeff. There's no, nothing more fun than putting you on the spot, I bet.
He carries a gun. I, I don't know if I do. He carries a gun.
And I passed qualifications last week.
It's easier to get Donnie shook up, so. I don't know, is there anything else y'all want him to find out? I'd say just email us, because we probably need to get something going on.
Yeah, we need to get going on it.
So find out how fast they get here and what the trade-in would be.
I'd say email us some information. And maybe we can put it on the agenda for next Tuesday to try to make a decision.
Just throw out, too, you might contact Brian and see if you can find out what a new unit would be on state bid. So, just, just so you know what you're dealing with as far, 'cause this company is not gonna, it's not gonna be off state bid. It's, when you do their trade-in, it's with them individually.
So now Brian's gonna get a marshal's hat or something, too. Probably jacket. Badge. Now he'll be able to walk wherever he wants to over at the courthouse.
I got a badge last Thursday that I wore.
Yeah, he's listening, so that's why I wanted to throw that in.
We just, we just gave him an M-Rap, so.
I wanted to take that out and play with it before you got rid of it.
All right.
Hey, we're getting closer to ten.
Through some emails and see if there's anything else we missed. I'm just browsing through some emails and see if there's something else coming. Did I get you her email for the Thursday night live? It was on that email that sent ya.
Christie and I went out and met with the Lions Club last Wednesday to maybe do some kind of a site program in the new health department. They, we brought up the fact that the Wardsville Lions Club is the largest and the wealthiest in the state, and so that they should carry the majority of the, foot majority of the bill, so.
We'd like to help the I-Tissue Bank, and we've got several other causes that we help.
The I-Tissue Bank's not there anymore.
See, that's how much we helped them.
They took the Lions name off of it also.
You want us to do what for the health department?
We're gonna do, put, put in like a site, clinic or whatever, where we can do, uh, testing, you know, on some of the WIC patients. They're kids, they're, so. I think they, the space where they were sorting glasses, too, that lease, or it's, the building's so old, it's, so they're gonna have to move it, and I think St. Charles was looking at, at taking that.
So what are y'all asking for?
Well, if we do it through the Lions Clubs of Cole County, you've got four clubs in Jefferson City. There's Wardsville Lions, there's Brazito Honey Creek Lions, there's Russellville.
To do what? At the health department? To do what there?
To, to do a, like a site clinic. Just basically the operations that have been a club.
So I'm gonna go and have a volunteer check my eyes.
That's what they do now. We do that now. And then you're firm on.
They're specifically trained for it, though.
Okay. Trained volunteers, that's a little different than.
Yeah, they're not bringing in, say, Joe coming to run a machine.
Here, hold this tape measure. I'm gonna be forty yards away. How many fingers am I holding up? Okay, you can see good at forty yards. You're fine. Get on out here.
Jeff, give an eye test, huh?
Yeah.
You're good. Get in that eighteen-wheeler and drive it.
Can you see? My sight's getting bad, so I can't see anything. It's as bad as my hearing, so it's even funnier. I don't believe what I hear or see anymore.
Find somebody for you anyway.
So there, where you go to the schools and do this, now you're gonna have it at the health department, too?
Yes.
So who's that supposed to be geared towards? What's your target audience there? So it's only for the WIC kids? They don't go to school? Oh, six months old. I thought you were saying six months or six months again. See?
What'd you say about your hearing, Jeff?
Okay, so this is like preschool. Pre-preschool, even. So what's a six-month-old tell you? Like A, C, D?
No, it's a, it's a machine.
All I got right now. All the other stuff's people asking for money. I'm like, jeez.
We gotta stop these golf tournaments. My God, I had, I did three golf tournaments yesterday.
You wanna fight?
I sponsored.
Stop golf tournaments. Where the hell do you think I get my therapy from?
We're having one a week from today for Relay for Life.
Oh, see, we had, we had VTA, we had the Forty and Eighth American Legion, we had James, Pee-wee brought his grandson in from Jamestown Boosters Club, and they're having one. And then Evening Lions Club, and then I've got, yeah, yours, so, it's like, my God, and this is only May. Just wanna have any money left for the commissioners tournament, I guess.
I sent that out way before these other guys did. See how you are, Sam? Aren't you running this year? You better be sponsoring. You oughta have a team in it.
You think? I'll stay at the clubhouse.
I'm sponsoring a gym, and I'm staying. I have two meetings I have to do.
Is that your phone ringing? Can we call them until we're ready for them?
I guess we could recess until ten AM. We recess till ten AM.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Sure. Aye.
Aye. We'll come back when.